Thank you for coming and opening up the building for us this evening.
No problem.
It was very kind of you and helpful.
There doesn't seem to be anybody here, so.
We thought maybe.
She goes.
Send her.
Here she go.
Jane?
Yeah, sorry guys, I keep getting the buffering.
Yep.
So I have an internet issue, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Jane, are you there by yourself?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so first on the agenda then is review and approval of the minutes of October 13th. Is there a motion?
Are there any public comments, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah, I guess there are public. Anybody from the public? I see John looks like the only member of the public. John, are you here for one of the other topics, or are you here to make a public comment relative to something that's not on the agenda? Okay, he had, he said no comments. Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, on to minutes. Minutes of October 13th, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the 13th of Octo- sorry.
October.
October.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill Dusset?
Is there any discussion, comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is the set where I think we need to make the correction.
Yes.
Because we did not approve the September minutes.
Item three on the first page says that we approved the minutes of September 15th, but my recollection is that we're waiting for those to be revised due to the discussion about the ballroom property. Is that right Diane? Is that your remembrance of it?
That is correct. I believe Valerie asked to postpone and we had a second, but I'm sorry that the minutes don't reflect that, so we need to correct that for, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll delete that portion.
I'll make a motion. I'll revise my motion, make a motion to accept the minutes with the correction that the review and approval of the 9:15 minutes was postponed.
Okay, Bill, do you resecond that?
Consider reseconded.
Alright, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I will do a roll call. Let's try to get myself organized here. Alright, so Ted, Ted Sealy.
Present and alone, yep.
Um, no, I'm sorry, this is.
Oh, you're voting on the? Yes.
On the minutes?
Aye.
Yes? Ted, Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Val Shelton?
Aye.
Eric Baumann, I vote aye. Tony, I don't think you were, yeah, you were not representative at that meeting. Alright, so the motion passes unanimously?
I think that Scott Blackstone is also on the call, on the Zoom call, and he's, so I'm the alternate.
Oh, okay.
The full-time planning board right now.
I'm sorry, I thought it was the other way around. I thought you were the appointed. I'm sorry Scott. Scott, are you, are you alone?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Well, my dad is here.
Alright, so second on the agenda was the minutes of September 15th as they were revised. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 15th, 2020?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, was that you Jane?
Yes.
Any discussion? Comments? Alright, hearing none, we will go to the vote. Ted Sealy?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Val Shelton?
Aye.
And Eric Baumann, I vote aye also. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. Alrighty, so that motion passes unanimously. Third is a meeting minute of the joint meeting 10:14:20. Is there a motion to accept, to approve, accept those minutes?
So moved. Val Shelton?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? Alright, hearing none, I will do a roll. Tony, you, Tony, Tony Weinstein?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Abstain, okay. Bill Dusset?
Abstain.
Jane Ford? Hello Jane?
Sorry everybody, I got a buffering problem. I was just typing in. I vote yes.
Yes. Val?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain because I was only there for a portion of the meeting. Ted, were you?
Uh, no, I was not, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, I think I got everybody then.
Eric, I apologize, that was our joint meeting. I was there.
Yes.
Yeah, I.
I knew you were, I didn't know if you had a reason to abstain.
I vote yes, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Tony, can you clarify again who the new TC appointee is?
So that's Scott Blackstone.
Okay, so he's not here tonight?
No, he, he is.
He is.
Why do, so Eric, why do you have Tony voting?
Well, she was at that meeting.
Oh, okay, but I think she's, she's the alternate tonight.
Yes, yes, but, but at that meeting she was here. Scott, were you at that meeting virtually?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so.
I was, this was a joint meeting?
Yes.
No, I was physically in town.
Okay, so how do you vote on approving the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Tony was there in her official capacity with the town council. Maybe you should clarify that.
Oh, true, true.
My, my only point is that Scott should be voting tonight because he's present?
Yes.
No, that's fine.
Yes, I didn't think, I didn't think, I apologize, I didn't think Scott was at that meeting. So Tony's, so for this minutes Tony didn't. Not voted. Tony was here as a town counselor. Alright, so that motion passes. Now on to public, regular business. First item is a public hearing for an application for an 11 lot, open state, single-family subdivision with municipal water and sewer services on a 12 acre lot, requested by 77 Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Cheney slash Chinburg Builders Inc. This lot is located at 77 Hershey Lane, tax map R4, Lot 3, in the R2 zone. So first, because this is a new application, I will reach out to Ms. Hardy. Diane, is it your opinion that this application is complete?
Yes, it is. They submitted a very complete submittal, including the alteration of terrain application that is going to, or has gone to the state, as well as the updated drainage. And Mr. Kerrigan and Ms. Monat, how do you say your last name? I'm sorry. Alex is here, that's easier. Alex is here to answer any questions, and Christian Smith, who's the engineer on the project.
Okay, so based on Diane's recommendation, I would accept the motion to accept the application as complete?
So moved. Val Shelton?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Uh, this is Ted.
Okay, thank you Ted. Alright, motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we will do the roll call. Scott Blackstone?
Yes.
Ted Sealy?
Aye, yes.
Bill Dusset?
Abstain, I'll be sitting out on this one.
Jane Ford?
Yes.
Val Shelton?
Yes.
And Eric Baumann vote yes. By my count, the motion passes five to zero with one abstaining. Okay, so now for the public hearing, what I'd like to do is, I think everybody's aware that this project has been in front of us for quite a while. The review engineer from Underwood, you know, three, four, maybe six months ago now, had some concerns about drainage and some other issues, and Mark West went out and looked at the wildlife corridors and wetlands and things like that. So the project has morphed a little bit since we've seen it last, so with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Christian, Alex, whoever you guys want to give us an update on where we are, please.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again for the public. My name's Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates, representing Chaney Companies on this project. Would it be appropriate to share a screen at this point, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Okay, this will probably take a second to get live, but, oh, host is disabled.
Tim?
No.
Can you make that option available to Mr. Smith, please?
Well, I can start briefly anyway without the plan. So I think all of you are aware, at least most of you that have been through the recent hearings and the TRC hearings, that we did go through all of the comments from UEI as well as West Environmental, and addressed those to the best of our ability. What this resulted in was actually taking, excuse me, units eight and 10, turning that into a duplex, so we actually have now 10 lots, 11 units, with one of them being a duplex. That enhanced and mitigated a lot of slope grading up near the land that comes off and is connected to the prime wetland, pulled us probably 50, 60 feet away from that setback, which we feel, you know, very much improved the situation from that perspective. As Diane mentioned, we have revised the drainage completely to reflect the culvert that was requested by Mark West, which basically allows for any overflow of the vernal pool not to get into our drainage treatment system, but bypass that and enter through a rather large plunge pool directly into the head of the finger of wetland that I was speaking of before. We intend to have this project on municipal water and sewer. I know there was a question about whether we were going with gravity sewer or force mains. So what the, I'm sorry.
Forgive me?
Oh, I thought you had something to say Diane, I'm sorry. So what this ended up turning out to be is essentially lot, units eight and 10, as well as lots five, seven, nine, and 11, will all have what we're assuming will be E1 sewer force mains, then two, respectively sewer mains two and three, and from the sewer, excuse me, will connect to sewer manholes, two and three, and from those manholes, everything is gravity. Go ahead Diane.
IT person has indicated that he has shared the screen with you, so if you want to try again to put your, your plan up.
Let me give it a shot, I will do that right now.
Thank you. There you go.
There we go.
Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent. So just to point some fingers now, the culvert inlet that I was talking about is right here, and that provides the drain for many potential overflow from the low point of the berm essentially on the downstream side of the vernal pool. We connect that to a manhole outlet, again, at the end of that finger, which keeps the hydrologic connection, which is what one of Mark West's concerns were. And again, so it'll be units eight and 10, five, seven, nine, and 11. Those will all have force mains that connect to either, and I guess I've gotta scroll down a page, so that we'll get the utilities on the plan, will connect to either sewer manhole, sewer manhole three, and sewer manhole. Those points, those both connect into manhole one, and then out to the existing manhole on the Cromic Creek property. Those are by and large the, the major changes that have been made over the course of the past few months in working with Underwood and with Mark West. We continue to have the bioretention pond. We actually went as far as having Tom Sokolowski, he's an environmental consultant, that does field infiltration testing with an emusimeter. So we now have that data as well. So we actually have field data with, instead of using the KSAT values, which are published by SNE, it's just a little more accurate information, but it did show us that, that the infiltration rate is actually going to be somewhat higher than what SNE published for the KSAT value. So basically that means we're going to get a bit more of this treated water back into the, into the groundwater matrix up near these two wetlands, which I think is a beneficial thing as well. And I think by and large, those are the major changes. Obviously, we've still got to go to the selectmen for the upgrade of this portion of Hershey Lane from class six to class five, and we are assuming that's going to be a series of hearings with them. But I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions that the board may have, or Diane, if you have questions.
Thank you.
Does, okay, does any board members have any questions for Mr. Smith? I don't hear any. Do any, any members of the general public have any questions or comments? I guess that would be John.
He chatted, no comments.
Yes, he responded, no comments. Great, thank you. So Diane, at this point, we're going to take this package and send it off to Underwood, is that the plan?
I have not yet sent the plans, and I was hoping that Mr. Smith, if you could electronically send a set of the new plans over to Robert Sanders at the Concord office of Underwood?
Of course.
And the drainage report electronically, that would work for him?
Yeah, we'll file everything that we submitted to you Diane, to Robert directly, because we keep those in separate, you know, digital file folders. And I guess if you want to just add, Mr. Chairman, that in addition, there has been a full wildlife habitat assessment done on the property by GOV Environmental. That has been sent out to Melissa at Fish and Game. She is reviewing all those for AOT, to be sure that they meet their new criteria specific to that aspect. And the alteration of terrain application has been filed with both DES and LRAC, which is the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, that they oversee anything that goes on in the quarter-mile setback to the Scassop River.
Great, thank you Christian. Alright, so.
I just have one quick question for Christian. As I was looking at your drainage plan, I noticed you had a plunge pool in a couple of locations, and that, to me, is a new thing. Can you explain to us what that exactly does and means, and what it looks like, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. What I'll do Diane, is I'll share a screen and get down to the, get down to the detailed pages.
Sure.
And again, I'm sure this will take a second to load up here. You know, my PDF is freezing up here. Come on now. Well, I guess I will describe it until my computer wants to behave. So essentially what this boils down to Diane, is a, you can see the shape of them.
Yeah.
So the rectangle on the bottom is essentially, it's, it's two pipe widths wide by three pipe widths long. That's the square at the bottom, and then that feature, oh, we're almost there, there we go. That feature then comes up three to one. The entire thing is, is filled with riprap, and it has a level downstream end, as you can see, as you can see. And so we used, used six-inch T50 riprap, which means the largest stone is going to be, in, in this mix, is going to be 12 inches in diameter, smallest stone is going to be two inches in diameter, but it, it makes for an extremely stable outlet base, and it reduces these huge wide swaths of riprap apron, and basically takes all the erosive velocity that's dropping into the plunge pool. And you can see, I think this one is two feet deep, and so the water comes out of the pipe, blasts into the stone, fills this up, and then sheet flows over the edge.
Okay, into the bioretention. Right?
Well, in one case into the bioretention pond, in the other case into the finger of the well. But yeah, I mean, essentially, these are not per se new technology. You know, they, they just make a lot of sense when we're working in steep sites, or particularly sites like this, where we don't want, you know, a 25 foot long by 18 foot wide riprap apron trying to dissipate this water as it comes down as close to the finger of the well.
Do they pose any safety hazards to little kids that might be exploring in the vicinity and might fall into one of these?
No, they probably shouldn't, because again, they're only two feet deep.
Okay, and they don't, the water in the pool.
We've heard of nothing of that.
I'm sorry?
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, you, you know, you've got a foot and a half of, of stone in there, so it dissipates very quick.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Smith? I see Paul Kerrigan's on the line. Paul, do you have anything to add? Would you like to add anything?
I'm, I'm actually good. I think Christian's pretty much summarized where we're at at this point, and, you know, sending all the plans along to Underwood is, I believe is our next step.
Okay, great, thank you. Alex, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, with that then, I guess we'll entertain a motion to continue. Do we want to continue to our December meeting? Yes? Okay, Diane, our December meeting is December 8th, is that correct?
December 8th, yeah, and that's the meeting which we hope to discuss floodplain regulations and have a public hearing. So at this point, this would be the only other application on the agenda.
Just, just a comment?
Yep.
So this is going to Underwood for review first, correct? Then when does, when will TRC reconvene?
If we can turn that around quickly, we could probably have a TRC meeting before. You know, we would be in a position for taking a conditional or acting on the application. I'll just come.
I'm just thinking that from the, I think from both the planning board's time, and but more so on the applicant's side, that it would make sense when they come before the board that they would have met with the TRC first?
I think so too, I agree.
Yeah, I would echo that though.
Val, I'm, I'm thinking that Underwood's review should not bring up any surprises. This, these redesigns are based on their reviews and Mark West reviews, you know, from quite a few months ago, so I'm hoping that there's not a whole lot. I'm, I'm available, I mean, I'd like to do a TRC before this meeting and try to keep it on schedule, but it'll all depend on how quickly we get review comments from Underwood and how significant they are. But with that said, I still think we, you know, I, I have no problem continuing to December 8th, and if for some reason, you know, the review doesn't get done in time or whatever, we'll just have to continue it at the December 8th meeting. Right?
I just think with the holiday, my only comment is with the holiday in there, whether or not it's feasible to have the TRC meeting and then bring the applicant, within that time period, and the applicant to be able to submit, you know, their, an updated plan for December 8th.
Yep.
What timeframe? The planning board meetings that's scheduled in January is not going to be scheduled until, I thought Susan said the 28th of January. Wait a minute, I'm looking at the wrong year. I don't have my 2021 calendar. Whatever the last Thursday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, in January would be. Usually we put off the meeting because of the holidays and New Year's and so forth.
The last Tuesday in January is the 26th. It's the fourth Tuesday, 26th of January.
I mean, that would certainly give us more time to be able to coordinate and work through any issues and get the conditions nailed down, so that we can hopefully expedite things at that meeting and move it forward.
Well, my only, you know, what's the feasibility of Underwood reviewing and having the TRC meet and the applicant revising anything to resubmit to the entire board prior to the 8th? And within the time period, they need to get it to the planning board in public.
It's, it's pretty close Valerie, I agree with you. Typically, Underwood needs a two week turnaround on the review of plans. If we get them, you know, to them tomorrow rather, or Thursday, we have a holiday tomorrow, then that puts us right into the Thanksgiving weekend, which of course Town Hall is closed Thursday, Friday, and it doesn't really give a lot of time. It gives about a week, you know, I mean, I guess I would, if, if this is something that is agreeable to the applicants, I think maybe it makes more sense to put it out to January.
Unless the applicant, just unless we're, we're continuing it from the next meeting.
Right.
What's the applicant's?
I mean, I'll, I'll defer to Paul obviously on that Diane and Val, but, you know, I think if, if we continue to the 8th, and as the chairman said, if at that point we find out because of the holidays and whatnot, things are taking too long, then we simply continue at that point until the 20th of January, if that's a deal.
Okay, that works. We've done it before, so.
Yeah, and, and again Diane, as Eric said, I'm not anticipating anything earth shattering from the, from the engineering review, so I'm, I'm getting, or, or TRC at this point with, with what we've been through, and I just would assume that we'll be able to very quickly turn things around provided we get, you know, the comments and, and are able to have TRC in enough advance time that we can get the.
Okay, the other thing that, and Alex, you and I have talked about this before, this has to go to the town council, because it's a Class 6 road that's being upgraded, and we have had some weigh-in from Steve Fornier, but we want to make sure that, you know, the timing is such that we can coordinate with them, and I don't know if you want to forward your application to the council before and have the benefit of their comments before we come back to the planning board. Obviously, you know, if it's not done simultaneously, it would have to be done consecutively, which would, you know, result in further delays down the road for you folks. I just wanted to throw that on the table for discussion.
Yes, Steve Fornier has been unwilling to put us on the town council agenda until we have at least a conditional approval from the planning board.
Alright.
And, and Diane, just remember that Rick weighed in on this quite a bit as both the fire chief and the DPW director, so I'm hoping that there won't be a lot of changes coming out of the council's end of it. I mean, I think the council would look at it from a legal standpoint and, you know, making sure the road gets constructed, but I would guess that they would rely heavily on, on Rick's, you know, DPW and sewer water, their input, which they've already had input on this project, so.
Okay.
All good thoughts, but, I mean, I would prefer to continue it to December 8th. If we don't make it, we don't make it. My calendar here, the next meeting is seven weeks, that would be a long.
Yeah, that's nuts.
I know.
Yeah.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, you know, maybe we won't make that timeline, but it gives us something to shoot for.
Exactly.
Mr. Carrigan I think has a comment.
Yeah, I, I just, forgive me for not knowing, but i- is it possible to get a conditional approval and then as part of the conditions have a, a TRC meeting as part of those conditions, a final meeting?
No.
Can't do it now, where?
No, we call it something other than TRC. I mean, it could be a committee review, is.
Yeah, we, we don't want the TRC to look at it after.
Okay.
The board, the board should have final say and the vote should represent any conditions on the actual approval.
Right.
And the council may have their own.
Yep, thank you.
Good question.
All the more reason to get everything wrapped up by the 8th for the meeting, I guess. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue to December 8th.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second?
I'm sorry.
This is Ted.
Ted, I'm sorry Ted, I just don't recognize your voice for some reason.
Sure.
Alright, so if you're in favor of continuing to the 8th, say yes when I call your name. Ted Seeley?
Yes.
Scott Blackstone?
Yes.
Bill Dusset is abstaining. Jane Ford?
Yes.
Val Shelton?
Yes.
Eric Bartman votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Well, thank you very mu- much folks. Good to see you all, and hopefully it'll be to a point where we can do this all in the same room very soon.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Thank you everybody, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is pursuant to RSA 675 colon 6 and RSA 675 colon 7, a public hearing will be held by the New Market Planning Board on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, the Town Hall Auditorium of the New Market Town Hall at 7:15. We're a little late regarding the adoption of the updated 2020 Water Resource Chapter as an amendment to the Town of New Market Master Plan. Copy of the full text of the proposed amendment to the master plan is available for public viewing at the Planning Office of the New Market Town Hall and at the town's website at www.nuemarket.gov. So I think I'll open up the public hearing. Diane, there is, Kyle is not here this evening, that's correct, correct?
That is correct, yes. He had another commitment in another community.
Okay, so I think every member of the board here has had ample time to review. We've reviewed this several times. Diane, are there any last minute changes that were made to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, what was it, in September Kyle came in and met with us and gave us an update and an overview, and there were a couple of questions, or was it September or August? The time goes by so fast, but I, I do know that there was some questions Valerie had on the implementation schedule to kind of condense it and get rid of some redundancies and kind of formatting type stuff. We also had some discussions about whether the issue of climate change should be its own separate chapter within our master plan, or if we should incorporate the recommendations throughout the various chapters, and I discussed that with the board, I think at the October meeting, and it was felt that we should do a good job in integrating in, into the master plan since it kind of falls across a number of different areas as far as, you know, the recommendations. And then there was some, Valerie had some comments that he shared with us, and Kyle and I talked about the need to really have something in the report on the drought situation, since at that point we were, you know, at a hazard. We're still at phase in the stage three category, but we did work with Sean Gregg, and we put together some text on the drought issue and a map, and Sean Gregg incorporated the town's what a management plan, and there's some good language, I think. We, we added a recommendation on that, that the town continue its efforts to come up with water saving ideas that not only that the town would employ, but that property owners in town could employ during these periods of drought. So anyway, with that, I think, you know, there were a couple, there were a hand, there's always a handful of editorial things at the, at the end, but he did correct them, and I think at this point, we're in a place where we can recommend that the board adopt the plan. I think it's in good form. Again, thank you to Bill Dusset for his assistance with the photographs, and I think overall it looks like a great document, and so I would recommend inclined this evening to adopt it as official chapter of our master plan, and I will get out to everybody, we usually have a sign, a place in the document where the board members can memorialize the document and sign, you know, a, a declaration, a proclamation, whatever you want to call it, to recognize everyone's good work, and we certainly appreciate the input. We had a lot of great input from a number of people, and I think it's an excellent document myself, so. Anyway, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you Diane. Before we start talking to members, is there anybody from the public that has any comments? I'm not sure, I see John on the screen anymore. Tony, you still by yourself at the Town Hall? There's nobody there that wants to speak to this?
There's nobody here.
Okay, I see nobody from the public on the screen anymore. Any board members have any comments they'd like to make or any suggested edits at this point? If I hear none, I will entertain a motion, I guess to approve this Water Resources Chapter.
I'll make a motion to approve the Water Resources Chapter as submitted.
Is there a sec- second?
Second.
That Jane?
Yes.
Any comment, comments? Okay, hearing none. If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Scott Blackstone?
Yes.
Ted Seeley?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Val Shelton?
Aye.
And Eric Bartman, I say aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Diane, I'd like to thank you and all the other members of the board that spent a lot of time getting this out, and certainly Kyle and his, his, his group. It was a lot of work and, but it's a very, I think it's a very, very good document. Thank you all for your, your time and energy spent on it. So next on the agenda is new old business, floodplain amendments and map adoption discussion. Diane, I'm gonna, I have the documents sitting in front of me, but I'm gonna leave it up to you. Would you explain this to the board members?
Okay.
This is a, this is a new requirement from the FEMA because of the FEMA remapping?
That's right. That's right. I, I will do so, Mr. Chairman. As some of you know, we've been waiting for, since 2015, for the official floodplain maps for the town to adopt, and of course, there's been some new technology, LiDAR and much higher accuracy tools available for mapping floodplains, and since I think 2011, FEMA has been working on new floodplain maps for New Hampshire, including Rockingham County, which is of course our coastal region, and they've come up with the new maps, and the way the flood insurance program works, it's sort of a, what we call a carrot and stick approach, where in communities that have adopted floodplain regulations, which are based on minimum standards that are actually set forth by the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and if you adopt those regulations, then property owners in the community are eligible for flood insurance. The federal government is the only place where you can get flood insurance, and it is subsidized through federal tax dollars, and I kind of, that's kind of an overview of, of the program itself, and New Market's been participating, I think since the 1980s, I'm not sure the exact date, but the maps that we have in place currently were, were updated and adopted in 2005, and the Office of Strategic Initiatives actually gets money from FEMA to assist planning boards in helping them develop the minimum regulations that are necessary in order to make the town eligible and townspeople eligible for flood insurance. And every time they have new maps, they obviously have to update the regulations that go along with them. So, and, and they've done an excellent job. They actually went through all the town's regulations that are contained in the zoning ordinance, in the site review regulations, and the subdivision regulations, and they have made some recommended modifications to our regulations, so that in effect it will bring us into compliance with the federal regulations and will allow us to use the new maps. So these are actually, what we have on the books now are minimum requirements set forth by them, and what we're proposing to amend our ordinance to incorporate are also minimum requirements. There's a couple of areas in our regulations where New Market is more stringent than the federal regulations, and that includes that new construction within areas other than the M1 and M2 zone, that new, single family development is not allowed in those zoning districts currently. So anyway, be that as it may, and so I got a copy of the draft regulations a couple of weeks ago, and I, I'm putting them before the planning board this evening. Again, there's zoning regulations, which of course the purview of adopting zoning regulations lies with the town council after hearing a recommendation from the planning board. So the zoning will go to the town council after the planning board does its review, and typically we have our own public hearing process so that we can make a recommendations on those. The other two pieces include recommendations to the subdivision and site plan regulations. And those are regulations that the planning board itself can review and update and adopt. So we're on a fairly short timeframe here unfortunately. We, you know, we waited six years for the maps to be finalized, because it went through this whole appeals process, and we were anxiously waiting to get our regulations up to date so we could comply, and then when we finally heard, it was what, in, in July, in the middle of this pandemic, and finally they approved them and said, you know, we want you to make changes to your regulations no later than, and their date of certification has to be before, 10 days before of when the maps actually go into effect, which would be January 29th, 2021. So having, you know, we, we have a very small window of time here. So my hope is that if we can review the app, the regulations tonight, make sure everybody understands and feels comfortable with them, that we could perhaps have a public hearing on these as early as our next meeting in December. that we could perhaps have a public hearing on these as early as, um, our next meeting in December, which is December eighth. And simultaneously with that, we will be submitting to the town council the zoning changes, um, and for our first reading, what the game plan at this point is, first reading, the first meeting in December, which is December, who is my cal, I don't have a new cal, oh, yes, okay, December second, I'm sorry. And then have a second reading on the sixteenth, which, which would be a week after the planning board would have its opportunity to review and make their recommendation to the council. And the hope is to get everything wrapped up before the Christmas holiday. Cause we do have to send in the certification to FEMA and to the Office of Strategic Initiatives no later than, I think we figured it out to be January fifteenth, which is, uh, you know, so many days in advance. So that's kind of the go- game plan at this point and really what is being proposed here is just really incorporating the new maps and there's some really good editorial changes. One of the big things that came out of the new maps is that New Market now has what they call a floodway, which requires, um, uh, engineering hydraulic analysis for anyone who wishes to make a change to the floodway. And the floodway is actually, um, a section of the Lamprey River that is, um, in the vicinity of where our new park is, um, on the Lamprey, near the, the, um, food, shelter, I'm sorry, the food pantry and the new park. So it's like north of that area going up to into Durham and I've provided a copy of the map showing before, before the floodway and then after the floodway to give you an idea of how that impacts properties up in that area. So, and that necessitated adding another paragraph, paragraph eight, eight, I think it is, in the zoning ordinance to reflect the minimum standards for development occurring within the floodway.
Diane, can you just, just expand on that before we leave your, your, the, the
Okay.
Before, after?
Yeah, if you, uh, do you have my packet open?
Yes, I do. So, the flood, the floodway is the area extending along both sides of the river, as I understand it? What is the, what's the legend for the brown?
Hang on, hang on, let me get the map up Valerie, please.
That'd be great.
Okay, I have, I'm working with two computers here, they're not very forgiving, okay. Let's, let's just take as an example, if you go down the agenda that I have, map comparisons, two thousand five, two thousand twenty-one, do you see that?
That's what I have up, yep.
Okay, mine up now, so.
Diane, can you share that screen with everyone? No?
Um, yeah, I can.
If you're able to.
Take me a few minutes, cause again, I can't do it on the other computer.
So I, see, it's all online, everyone can look at it, I think we have it, so just not, just to facilitate, cause it's a basic question.
I know, but that's the only area that's impacted by this.
Okay, so look, here's my question, if I can.
Sure, go ahead.
In looking at the original, the, the, in looking at the current map that's adopted and then the, in comparison to the pending twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
What is the brown shading that is new along the one oh eight gateway?
That is the floodway.
So, any development along the north gateway will require the additional engineering?
If it's within that zone, yes.
Okay.
And I have, I, I have spoken to a couple of the property owners up there, giving them the heads up, but you know, other communities have had floodway regulations in effect for twenty-five years, so it's just adding another
Oh, I, I understand.
Analysis
Yes.
Are sure that there's not going to be major impacts on the hydrology of the river.
Sure. Yeah, the question was, cause there's no, there's no legend on the map, so it was
Okay. So let me give you another tip here, if you, I gave you a, a press release that is actually on the town's website and there's a link there and there's a link to the maps and you can do your own analysis and looking at the new maps. And there's also, and I can set you up with it, there's also a, a special tool that the Office of Initiative, Strategic Initiatives has created where you can actually do the analysis that's shown on that example that I've given you.
No, this is, this is fine, I just was, I was just wanting to understand the twenty twenty-one firm as to how it impacts the northern gateway because obviously the town is going to be spending a lot of money on
That's right.
Promoting the redevelopment of the northern gateway.
Right, but it's only on one side of the river, as I understand it, it's not on both sides of the river, if you look at the map. In New Market. Right?
It's all along the one oh eight, the brown.
Right, but it's not on the other side of the river is what I'm trying to impart, that's what I thought you asked the question about.
No, the one oh eight gateway.
Right, and I'm aware of that and I, actually, I did, um, make contact, when I discovered that, I made contact with one of the property owners, which last fall or last, I guess it was last fall, when we had the discussion with property owners, that he would be aware of this change so that his engineer could advise him on how it would impact his ideas that he has for future development of that land.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, just so everybody understands, that's a significant burden for the property owners. Basically, if you fill, uh, the, if you fill a hundred cubic feet, you need to cut a hundred cubic feet somewhere else on your property to compensate for the additional floodwaters. That's kind of oversimplifying it, but it, it's going to make it very difficult to do development on some of those properties up there, I surmise.
And I agree with you, that's why I told them about it, so.
But potentially, justifiably so.
Yes, yes.
And, and you know, also, as, and I started to say, this is a carrot and stick approach, you know, the, the, the carrot is, they will make flood insurance available to property owners provided we play by their rules. And that is the option of the minimum requirements.
And the
Right, and it's, it's just, that's how it's described.
Yeah, yeah.
But there is an incentive to the property owners to, um, you know, make, to, to do the proper flood proofing and so forth, to minimize the so, even though it's required, um, it's, it's helping them make those improvements. And I, I'm not going to get into a debate about the program, uh, but that's, as I understand it, that's how it works.
Yes, that's, yeah, and I, I mean, I think Bill's right though, is that there is, you know, I certainly remember at least two instances where there was severe flooding along the river there.
Okay, so Bill's nodding his head, yep. Well, and we, and we did, you know, when we had those meetings with the stakeholders, with the gateway stakeholders, we did bring it to their attention about the, uh, potential uh, constraints posed by the floodplain there, as well as the poorly drained soils, which are also covered under our, uh, Wetlands Conservation District.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I mean, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but you know, the, uh, the, the whole reason, I mean, back when I was on the council, we started going through the, um, looking at taking the dam down was because of flooding in that area and one particular resident complaining, complaining and, uh, basically doing a, um, an initiative to have us look at removing the dam, so it's, it's an issue there, there's a lot of flooding there. But, so Diane, we don't need to do than just get comments and move this on.
I would like to have a public hearing on this at our next meeting. So we can move this process along. I think Bill Doucette has another question.
Go ahead, Bill.
So Eric, I've, I've looked over the recommended changes, um, by Diane and, and in my opinion, they all, they all look sound and this seems to be ready for, um, a, a public hearing.
Good, good, cause I mean, I certainly have looked at them, but I didn't look at them with Diane and then I'm sure you know more about that than I do. Anyways, you probably do a lot of this, um, so I'm, I'm great, I like, I'm glad to hear that, so, um, unless I hear objections, uh, I think we'll just move this on to the, uh, meeting December eighth for a public hearing. Does anybody have any objections to that? I don't hear any. Um, okay, we'll move it, move it on to the December eighth meeting. So Diane, you'll take care of, of posting and everything?
Yeah, we, we need to post it and there's also a question I'm trying to get to the root of, um, if we are, are zoning maps and it's affecting fewer than a hundred property owners, we're required to notify, not by certified mail, but by, um, first-class mail, so I've been working with the Office of Initiative, Strategic Initiatives, they're going to help me put together a listing. And I think Valerie, we, in our, uh, Water Resource Committee, we talked about the importance of trying to get word out to the property owners because, um, this, this could affect them, it could affect them in a positive way, cause I think we've identified there's about two or three hundred acres of land that is no longer in the floodplain, so that's good news for the property owners. But, you know, we want to be prepared, so when people find out when they go to refinance their house or they go to, um, purchase a property or whatever the case may be, or the bill comes from their insurance folks about, you know, and they find there's, there's an increase so that people will understand and that, you know, there's people from the insurance, uh, community who are helping to, to educate their clients as well as to what this means for them.
Alrighty, thank you.
Eric, can I bring something up?
Sure.
Um, so I just got an email to from, um, I, I guess from FEMA about, um, a virtual open house that they're having for anyone, exactly for this, so that people can find out what their flood risk is, learn about the new maps, um, so that's Wednesday, November eighteenth from four to six, and I, I'm guessing you probably got the, it came just this afternoon?
That's correct, I got it and I will share that with all the planning board members. And thank you, Tony, for, um, reminding us of that.
Diane, is that something we should, um, have posted on the town's website? So anybody looking at the website, any could see it?
They have been having, um, there's actually been three, um, meetings, Zoom meetings that we have planned and organized for municipal officials and I attended the second one. The third one is actually on, um, on Thursday and then I saw tonight that they were having sort of this, the second round overview of, of how to use the maps and what they need to do. So I think that's good and, and they are trying to get the information out, uh, to as many people as possible. And we're, they were, we put something on the town's website, we put some Facebook, um, uh, Tim Kremm has been helping us with that and, um, hopefully there'll be something on channel thirteen. And, uh, we're going to try to get at least some notices out to the people in the floodway zone that are affected by the new regulations.
No, that's good, I mean, I, I like the idea of putting the information out, if people don't use it, they don't use it, but, you know, it's good to have it there.
Yep.
All right, moving on, Chairman's report, I have nothing to report as usual. Does anybody else have any board mem, any other, um, board or committee members have anything to report? Diane, do you have anything new to report?
Just wanted to say that, um, Steve, well, and, and Tony, maybe you can chime in on this, um, that the To- Town Council had some follow-up discussion at their, uh, meeting following our joint session, um, about, you know, the priorities for the town and so forth going forward. And the message I got from Steve was that for the ADUs, um, that, that's something that merits review, um, but there was a feeling that maybe that should wait to a later date when there's, cause there's going to be four new town council members, um, perhaps, uh, coming on board in March. So that was sort of put back to March, um, with the, but there was concern about the impact fees and they wanted to impact fee discussion and Valerie, you and I talked about, uh, putting together the language and, and getting something together for them. So, you know, I'd like to take care of that sometime in maybe January, uh, so that we can get the information to them so they can have, start that discussion and then hopefully get something in place, one way or the other, before, uh, the changing of the guard, so to speak. Is that a fair assessment, Tony, based on the discussion, I wasn't at the meeting, but Steve secondhand told me the
Um, yep, I think that that's, that's a definitely a fair assessment, um, I, I think that there were counselors, we're kind of split on the ADU question, so probably waiting until March, um, definitely makes the most sense and we did talk about, um, exactly what you said as far as impact fees.
Perfect. Does anybody have anything else they would like to add? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Jane, where are you?
I'm right here, I had to find that button. Ready, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a
Second?
All right, Ted, thank you, motion made and seconded, all right, so I guess I'm gonna do this, uh, the new way.
Scott, welcome to the board.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, very much so. So, motion to adjourn, Jane, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bill Doucette?
Yes.
Ted Seeley?
Yes.
Scott Blackstone?
Yes.
Val Shelton?
Yes.
And I, Eric Bartman, vote yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all again, we will, uh, see you next month.
Good holiday, everyone.
Everybody has a good holiday.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.